The Water Board meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Troxel, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvinitas.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
Lease Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. The Water Board consists of three members, myself, Councilwoman Robin, and Councilman Kevin. So at this time, we will take Councilman Caleb and Councilman Tom Schmidt off the roll call. Minutes of the October ninth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President. Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion in a second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Reports from staff, Mr. Gorman?
Uh, no reports, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council members, any reports on Water Board?
No, sir.
None, okay. There is no old business, there is no new business, so we will take any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll go into redevelopment.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The time is six thirty-six P. M. Uh, the Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire council, so we'll add council members, Tom Schmidt and Caleb Johnson. Uh, minutes of the October ninth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes five zero. Claims, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes five zero. Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
Uh, no reports. I just do want to make a note that the, the last minute, uh, last meeting was October sixteenth, as well as the Water Board. Just want to make that correction. Just saw that. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Any reports from council members on redevelopment?
None.
Okay, we don't have any old business, nor do we have any new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty-seven P. M. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the Redevelopment Board. First on the agenda are the minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, do we have any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
Uh, no reports, Madam President.
Any council reports regarding the Utility Board?
None.
No.
There is no old business. We do have new business, item A. Consider the approval of change order number two in the amount of sixty-three thousand eighteen dollars from Haci Construction for the Bio Solid Storage Building.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this is for the project down at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, part of this change order was when the contractor was digging the footings and the foundation for the new building, they ran into some bad soils and we had to haul them off-site because they were unsuitable to be used for backfill, so that's what that change order is for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
No.
Item A is approved, five to zero. Uh, next on the agenda, we have business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth at approximately six forty P. M. The roll call stays the same as the Utility Board. We'll move right into the minutes of the October sixteenth public meeting.
So moved.
Make a note that that's a, uh, error on the sheet.
Second. Motion to approve, Caleb, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next items, claims. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President, there is one claim to add to the claims agenda, and that claim would be item number M. And this is for Robinson Engineering, invoice number two four one one zero one one nine. And this is for the, uh, it's for two hundred forty-nine dollars, and this is for the Burr Street Subdivision Review.
Burr Ridge?
Burr Ridge, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero on claims. All reports, uh, we'll start to our left here. Uh, Robbie Hanson from IT.
No reports.
Our Deputy Fire Chief Dave Meyer.
Nothing to report, sir.
Our Police Chief Pete Sormas.
No report tonight.
Deputy Chief Steve McAmire.
No report.
And our Assistant Parks, uh, Director Irene.
Um, the only thing I was, John can't be here today unfortunately, so, um, I just wanted to note that November twenty-ninth, we're going to have a, a tree lighting event here at Town Hall. Um, this is sponsored by Chamber Town Hall, and then the parks is included in that also, so Santa will be here, the Grinch, and there'll be cookies, hot chocolate, and there'll be a craft also at this event. It starts at seven P. M.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Our Town Engineer Neil Simstad.
No report, Mr. President.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
No reports.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
No reports, Mr. President.
Any reports from council members?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to report that the Lake Central Varsity Cheerleaders won state this past weekend, and I wanted to give a shout out to them. Congratulations for their victory.
Thank you.
Pretty good.
Any other reports from council members? No reports. At this time, I'll, I'll open a public comments regarding agenda items. Is there any public comments regarding agenda items? No public comments. We'll move right into, there is no old business. We'll move right into the new business as item A is ordinance twenty thirteen. An ordinance establishing compensation, salary, and wages for officials and employees for the Town of Sherriville, Lake County, Indiana, classifying certain positions of employment together with the rates of pay, repealing and amending prior ordinance in conflict herewith, and declaring that, that emergency exists. This is our annual salary ordinance, uh, for two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is the annual salary ordinance that we, uh, pass every year. There was a few minor changes from last year, and this, uh, ordinance does include a three percent raise across the board. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty thirteen?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item B is a public hearing, um, on ordinance twenty fourteen, an ordinance providing for an additional appropriation in the police pension fund of the Town of Sherriville of the year two thousand twenty-four and all matters related thereto. Mr. Austin is the proof of publication in order.
They are.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll open it up to the floor. Is there any comments from the floor regarding, regarding this ordinance? No comments from the floor. Um, Mr. Troxel, you have any comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this additional appropriation is required by law whenever we need to, um, continue with our payment to, uh, to what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, this is for the police pension fund. Um, back last year when we approved our budget, um, the Department of Local Finance lowered that particular line item, uh, regarding our, uh, for our budget. So we do have enough money in the account. It's just a matter of they lowered our budget for the appropriation, so it's total of fifteen thousand dollars, and it's in the, um, budget class of one hundred retiree salaries and wages.
So we're fully funded, we're fully.
Plenty of, plenty of money there.
Good. We just have to reallocate some additional funds.
That's it. We have the cash. It's just got to put it in the, the appropriation budget. That's all.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, my next step says, um, once it's signed, I will submit this to Department of Local Government of Finance. They will review to make sure that we have the appropriate funds, uh, that I, we claim that they are, and then we will get an okay from that, so we can go ahead and make that transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Item C is a resolution, twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sherriville, Lake County, Indiana, amending the American Rescue Plan Act Plan and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, this resolution updates our ARPA plan. Uh, those changes have been made by staff, and, uh, we did have the ARPA Board meet last month. We went over all these changes, and, uh, the remaining funds just need to be appropriated by the end of the year, and we plan on doing that in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Any other discussion?
No. Motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item D is resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, is a resolution of the Sherriville Town Council opting out of the establishment of a merit system for the Sherriville Police Department pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash eight dash three point five dash five point five, and all matters related thereto. Uh, Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a resolution to opt out of creating a merit board. Uh, once the resolution is passed, uh, the rank and file in the police department will vote on whether or not to establish a merit board. This is a board similar to the Board of Safety, so that, that is the reason why we are choosing to opt out, since we already have a safety board.
Um, Mr. Gorman, I request, this is normally for rural areas, right, that do, that do not have a police commissioner or a safety board? Is that correct?
That's what our, that's what our thoughts are, yes.
Okay.
To make sure that the officers are, uh, represented.
Okay.
Motion, uh, to approve the op out on resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item E is resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, is a resolution of the Sherriville Town Council opting out of the establishment of a merit system for the Sherriville Fire Department pursuant to Indiana Code Section thirty-six dash eight dash three point five dash five point five and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman, is this very similar to the previous one?
It is, only for the fire department.
Thank you.
Motion to op out on, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item F is consider acceptance and approval of an agreement between Reardon Consulting Services, Performing Consulting Services for the Town of Sherriville, and American Construction Port Incorporated for Engineering Services at the Iliana Speedway in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, unfortunately, we didn't get a chance for a legal review on this contract, so I would ask that we defer this if, uh, the board is okay with that till, uh, the next meeting in December.
Okay. Motion to defer, second.
We have a motion to defer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion deferred till next meeting. Item G is consider approval of change order number two in the amount of sixty-three thousand eighteen dollars from Haci Construction Company for the Bio Solid Storage Building from the Utility Board Agenda. Mr. Uh, Gorman?
Yeah, it's the same thing I explained at the Utility Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item H is consider approval of pay request number four in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents for Haci Construction for the Bio Solid Storage Building. Mr. Gorman?
This is a pay request that Haci is requesting. It's basically for their October work that they've done, and, uh, it's appropriate to, uh, award them that payment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item A, I, is consider acceptance of extension of concrete contract for two thousand twenty-five with H Three Concrete Incorporated. Uh, Mr. Nandor?
Good evening. Um, the Sherriville Public Works Department received a request from H Three Concrete Company to extend their two thousand twenty-four poured-in-place concrete contract into the two thousand twenty-five construction season. Um, with the current market trends in the industry, we're looking for consideration just to accept this one-year extension of the contract. The unit pricing for all concrete submitted in two thousand twenty-four will remain in the two thousand twenty-five contract.
So we're getting the same price that we got in two thousand twenty-four?
That is correct.
And that's all in-house concrete work?
Yes, that's all public works, concrete work.
And that doesn't have anything to do with our CCMG work?
No.
Okay.
And have we been happy with H Three Concrete?
Yeah, they did quite a bit this year, and we were happy with the results. Uh, they're, they're a very good company to deal with, as we have with others in the past.
And from what I understand, Mr. Nandor, you only can do that one time, so next year we'll have to rebid it.
Yeah, similar to what we've done with the mowing contracts in the past or any of the other ones, they get the one-year extension.
Mm-hmm.
If they ask for it.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance or release of maintenance and issuance of certificate of release for the following: the Apple Tree Estates Phase Two, the Burr Ridge Southern Vision Phase One, and the Burr Ridge Southern Vision Phase Three. Uh, Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. All these projects were inspected by our Public Works Department, as well as our engineering consultants, and it would be appropriate at this time, at this time to, uh, release those certificates.
And Mr. Gorman, did, did we receive this from our Planning and Building Department?
We did.
Okay. And Mr., um, I guess, Mr. Uh, Simstad, that's been inspected?
Yeah, been inspected with the public works staff, received all of the required, uh, real work and records as well.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item K is consider acceptance of master services agreement between Life Safety Inspection Vault, LLC and the Town of Sherriville for a web-based management fire safety system regarding the code compliance. Uh, Mr. Meyer, do you have a representative here that wants to speak on this?
Uh, we do, sir, but the town chief, Adam Nemec, is with the main point of contact during this transition.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam.
Hi, Adam Nemec, Sherriville Fire Department. Um, Live Safe is, just like you explained it, a, uh, web-based, um, fire inspection reporting system.
Adam, I'm sorry, can you speak into mic a little bit more? It's all recorded you.
Yeah, um, Live Safe is, just like you said, it's an online, web-based, fire inspection reporting system. So what it's going to do is it's going to look at deficiencies in, um, occupancies faster than we would by going door to door like we typically do every day. Um, so when, um, a business hires a contractor to come in and check their sprinkler system or fire extinguishers, and they find a deficiency in there, they'll report it directly to us through this program. It's no cost to the town. Um, any other questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I had a question, yeah. Is the data that's on the system, is it going to be ours so that we can access it if we decide that we don't want to use it in the future, two years down the road? Are we still able to get all that information later?
Yeah, we'll be able to download anything that we have put into it. We'll be able to download it all back out. Any, um, reports that are in there, we can transfer to a different program or whatever we choose to do with it. It's our data.
And the agreement that we're entering into year-on-year, or is it a long-term agreement? How does that work?
Um, I, I don't recall offhand, but it's, uh, we can terminate it at any time with, um, written, with a written statement.
Okay. And how, and how do they make it no cost to us? Who's paying for it? Somebody has to pay for the service.
The businesses are, are being charged a small fee, um, and that's how they recoup their cost. Um, it, these businesses, because, um, Live Safe is being used by all the towns around us, the businesses are being charged a fee. It's already been, these contractors' schedules.
I see.
They're already being charged for it, but they're not getting the, um, the benefit from it.
Makes sense, okay.
Any other questions, Adam?
Mr. President?
Yes.
For Caleb, easy in, easy out. This has been reviewed, and it's going to provide a lot of efficiencies. It took a while to get to this point. They, they've been studying this for most of a year, and, uh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's well-vetted, if you will.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Adam.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item L is consider acceptance of the standard utility reimbursement agreement between the Town of Sherriville and Marathon Pipeline, LLC. This has to do with our Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Hanson?
Uh, yes, this is an agreement for six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars with Marathon Pipeline to extend some casing pipes for three parallel pipes, uh, larger pipes to accommodate the roadway extension. Uh, this includes well points for that area, since it's very saturated ground. Uh, this is just an agreement, uh, for us to pay for that portion of the project.
Just for clarification, Mr. President, we're, we're paying Marathon to move their lines because of our construction project.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And did we have, uh, any sort of control over the price in any way? I mean, does like an engineer say this is appropriate?
Yeah, the engineers reviewed it, DLZ reviewed it. I also had Neil review it, and it, it's rather expensive, but yeah, that is, it takes three to four weeks to do this project. It's, it's very expensive. Anything with pipelines is expensive.
And, and nothing you can do, uh, with this unless we want to stop the Kennedy Avenue project, so we're going forward.
Pretty much.
All right.
So with that being said, I'll approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this time, before I go to the next item, I forgot one of our reports that we get on a monthly basis. Mr. Reardon's here from our, from our consulting on the Iliana project, and Pat, do you want to give us a quick update? Uh, I know we've had a timetable here this week on our, uh, on our engineering company, but if you want to give us an update of where we're at.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, council members and town staff. Briefly, pardon me, since our last report at the October meeting, we've concentrated our efforts on the following three items. The first is, um, meeting with and working with Structure Point on their proposal concerning the concepts, ultimately, uh, full project development plan for the Iliana site. Second, uh, working with town staff on updating and submitting a project budget. And the, and the third item, uh, referencing due diligence, focusing on, on two aspects of due diligence. One is really the culmination of, of our work, uh, relating to wetland, and, um, once the concept is selected ultimately by the council, uh, then we'll use that concept as the desired development plan attached to an application to the Army Corps of Engineer for jurisdictional determination. But things remain positive on the wetland front, and finally, uh, consistent with the, the wetland and then with the soils, uh, AMERCO has finished their environmental phase-two report, and I'm excited to, to say that there's, there's no red flag. Uh, there would appear to be no hindrance for us as development proceeds, and we have confirmation that they did their job, and that the, the findings are in order. So that's a concise, uh, report from us during, uh, these several weeks.
And Mr. Reardon, our, our staff, uh, Mr. Gorman and our, we'll have our to- town attorney look over the contract that we received in the last couple of days and get back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
To, um, to keep this project moving.
Right.
Uh, so they can get, uh, their drawings, uh, drawn up, so.
Yeah, we, we understand that, and we look forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reardon?
No, thanks, Pat.
Yep.
Thanks, Pat.
No questions? Thank, thank you, Pat. Uh, staff members, I'm sorry, did you guys have any questions for Mr. Reardon?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, okay, we'll move right into the last item is item M is consider acceptance of donations of ten thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh, Mr. Troxel, would you be kind enough to read those for us?
Yes, I would, Mr. President. For the month of October, it was a very good month, as President stated, ten thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents in donations to the town. They were identified at the following funds: the Town Hall Donation Fund, Doug and Steve Construction donated crumble cookies. It's an in-kind donation, uh, in-kind value of about thirty dollars. The, uh, donation fund to the animal control. We have anonymous towels, were in-kind, were twenty dollars. Uh, Frank Bevkar donated shelves that were valued at five hundred dollars. Phyllis Casey donated food that was valued at two hundred dollars. The Nandfelt family donated kitten food, which was valued at fifteen dollars. Debbie Herman donated dog food, which was valued at forty-five dollars. Debbie Herman donated dog food, which was valued at $45. Mammy Nowakowski donated sheets and blankets valued at $20. And we received anonymous treats, bed, cage, bowls, dog food, and towels. In-kind value of $300. So the total to the animal control was $1,100. Thank you. The police received Monster Energy, 15 cases of Monster drinks. The in-kind value there was $240.80. The fire equipment fund received from AES Restaurant Foundation, which is Arby's fundraiser, donated $3,060. Very nice. Thank you. The fire department received from Belfour Companies Portillo's in-kind value $100. Amazon Mariville's six totes miscellaneous drinks in-kind value was $900. Monster Energy, 23 cases of various Monster drinks were also donated, $864. Speedway donated three pizzas to the fire department, in-kind value is 20. And Hooters donated chicken wings and fries. That in-kind value was $100. Total in-kind donations to the fire department, $1,984. And we have the Rotary Club of Sherreville donated for a bench. That donation was $4,012.8. In recap, for the month of October, total in-kind donations, $3,363.80. Total monetary donation, $7,072.8 for the grand total, $10,435.88.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troxell, and we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this time, we'll take business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor?
Mr. President, Ms. Sadie, Barb, yes, now's your time to come up. Okay.
Please step up and say your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Angela and Raymond Sexton.
You can pull it out of there if you want.
I'm sorry, I'm short. Angela and Raymond Sexton, we live on 34...
54, 30, 54, 49 West Sherreville, Indiana.
Sorry, nervous. We just got our second property in Sherreville. And we had recently learned that our garage had an easement, and it was owned by the county for over 50 years, and they deeded it to the town of Sherreville. It was 2100 Sheil Road. Now, when the county owned this, from what I've received from the commissioners, it was a partial, or a parcel of a egress strip of public road. And it was deeded to this town of Sherreville. And after the town of Sherreville received it, they, they quick claimed this to one owner. And now they will not let us have any access to our garage. They've come to our private showings now that we've tried to sell this. They've parked in front of our driveway when we have contractors that have equipment there. We have no access to our driveway. All we're asking and pleading from you guys are an easement of some sort. If it was used for over 50 years, and we have no access to our garage, I don't understand how it could be sold from Sherreville.
That's the only way we get into the garage.
And there's, there's no other access to Austin. There's nothing. That was how it was built. And now, because it was sold that way, they're just giving us so much trouble. I mean, so much trouble. We had to call the cops. My, we have a real estate agent, we've, we've reached out, but this is just us pleading.
I called Andy. I called him too.
I mean, even today, they're trying to just get their equipment back. I mean, they have table saws, and they won't let us on the land.
Yeah, Mrs. Sexton, I was out there on Saturday myself, Mr. Gorman, Mr. Hanson. And I find it kind of the strangest, one of the strangest situations I've ever seen, where they're denying access to your garage, and it's the only access that you have to your garage. I don't, I don't know what, I did ask the planning and building director to dig up all the records. I don't know if that's been done yet.
It has been done. Also, Diane had a file on it from 2022 of when this deed, this quick lane deed did happen. So we are reviewing those documents right now. So we just, I was just made aware of it this week, but we have pulled everything, and we are looking through it.
Well, that's the thing, we, we bought the house in June.
You got to talk into the mic, sir.
So we, we bought the house in June. We've been going up and down that driveway the whole time. Never said anything, never was a problem. And then now we went to sell it, and now it's a problem. The grandparent, it's her grandpa's house when she was young, so he's been there over 40, 45 years. So he used it. He was going up and down it. So how, the fact that you guys sold it and didn't even contact him, he's, he was in his 90s at that time, 2022. He was in his 90s, so you don't know, I don't get how he, it's the only way he got into his garage. So they didn't have a problem with it. They bought it because they thought that maybe they were going to buy his land soon, maybe. I don't know. It's the people right behind us. The way they get into our driveway, that's how we get into our garage. So that's crazy that you can...
Yeah, we're going to pull it, pull all the records and look into it.
I'd like to give you what the commissioners gave when the county owned it. It was a parcel of a, a public road, a strip of public road, and that's our only access. So we should have an easement by prescription that it was used by this, and that's all I wanted to give you.
Yeah, we will take that. Thank you. We're going to look into it, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Sexton, be sure to stay in contact with our staff on that, okay? Is there any other business from the floor?
Hello, Jeff Minar, 1279 Poppy Field Place. I just wanted to say real quick, it's awesome to see the police officers and fire department, and we appreciate you all very much. You make us feel very safe in Sherreville. Thank you.
Is there any other business from the floor? No other business? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.